"Are you interested in coming to collect people?" Obviously, I'm thinking, "Well, where is that?" You know, I've been in California my whole life, and honestly, my first question was, "Where is Collexico?" And I looked on the map, of course, I've passed it a million times between Yuma and San Diego. You know, so I clicked out of the map. And then, I started reading all the articles, and all the blogs, and all the things going on for years and years, and I said, "Wow, there's a lot of controversy going on in the city of Collexico." And I said, "I was kind of built for this, so, you know, maybe I'll at least go have a conversation with Richard." So that happened. So I met with Richard, and I met with John, by his director. I'm sorry for using their first name, Mr. Ware and Mr. Quinn, you know, but we're on a first-name basis, so I apologize if I didn't mean to disrespect him. You are the city manager and...
Richard's fine, I can call the worse.
So we came down, and they started sharing their vision. And, you know, they're both retired guys who come back to help out the city of Collexico. And when you hear their vision, they had me eating out of their hands in about 15 minutes. It was like, "Okay, am I really up for this?" You know, in my career in the LAPD, I want to tell you about that because it's important. Because when I left the LAPD, I got to be honest with my wife, and I was tired. Tired of controversy, tired of being the cleanup guy, tired of dealing with bad actors in the LAPD, you know, just really kind of embarrassed of the things that were happening in the LAPD in the past few years of my career. So my wife will tell you, it was like, it was not an exciting day when I retired, but it was like relief. I could finally breathe and not think about all the controversies swirling around me and everything else, and all the politics that were happening in the city. I handled the Rampart investigation, the first one and the second one. The first one, you probably don't know about, there was another controversy in Rampart before Rafael Perez and the drug stealing and all the thuddering that was going on in Rampart. There was another one before that, about eight years prior. And Rampart, and I know my officers here because they've already told me, I met with the POA this morning, and they were very gracious. They met with me, they're willing to work with me, and they listen to me. They're a very great group of people I'm looking for and working with them, and they're willing, they extended the hand and at least listened to me. And they hated when I compared things to Rampart, and I'm not comparing Collexico to Rampart. What I'm comparing is my experience of what it's like to go in a community. In this case, we have as many immigrants from the other side of the border during the day as we do citizens, and it's a very similar makeup. Collexico's eight square miles, Rampart was eight square miles. And it was a combination of Central and South American community, and every one of them, for the most part, were immigrants from another country where they didn't trust the police and they didn't trust the government. And what was happening in that department, and I'm not comparing it to Collexico, I'm trying to tell you about why I'm here, was officers started beating members of the community, abusing them, arresting them without justifiable cause, and it was a mess. And I was a brand-new captain at the time. And I met with Darryl Gates, who was the chief one day, and he says, "Mike, I want you to go in there and fix Rampart." And I thought, "Why in the world do I want to get promoted?" You know? Because the world wants to do that, so that was kind of my first blush to go into it. And what I found is exactly what I'm finding in Collexico when I got here. A lot of really dedicated police officers that are dying for leadership. That's what I found when I got to Rampart. And when I got to Rampart, it took a while because they didn't trust me. They thought I was the hatchet guy, that I was out to get everybody. They were waiting for the ax to fall. Well, it never did, because all they needed was some leadership and some guidance on what the right thing to do is, and guess what? When a cop puts on the badge, they know what the right thing to do is. They're just waiting for somebody to give them the leadership as the approval to do the right thing and go forward and be unafraid of retaliation, of being harassed or being humiliated, and all of those things that happen in small parts here. So that happened for me. So Rampart was an awesome experience, and when I went away from Rampart, it was like, "Okay, I can breathe again." We were able to put everything together, the community started to trust us, the cops were finally doing the right thing and having fun again. And then, I handled the Dennis Cosby murder, I handled the Michael Jackson case, I was involved in the O.J. Simpson case. It was just one controversy after another after another. And inevitably, some officers somewhere in the organization would embarrass us in the middle of the organization. And I want to introduce some people here before I go too far, because it's not insignificant to me that my friends in the Imperial Valley are sitting here today. My brother's in arms in law enforcement, DA Gilorterra, and I probably just butchered your name. Our sheriff, Fred Veramontes, and his staff are here. Chief Mike Cologne from the Imperial County Police Department is here. And their staffs are here from the DA's investigator's office, and their chief, the fire department's here. A lot of my officers are here in the room, and I'm glad they're here to hear me speak because I hate it when people tell stories about what they think I said, now they get to hear what I said, and then they get to come and say, "Did you really say that?" And they're willing, so that's great. So anyway, after handling all those things, I've kind of minded my own business, I promoted Deputy Chief. Life was like really good, and finally, I'm through all of these scandals, and what happens next? Rampart and Rafael Perez. So once again, Chief Rampart Parks, now the chief, Rampart Parks thinks he has a sense of humor and says, "Mike, you're gonna handle this thing." And I'm telling you, it was the most sickening journey of my life, because we sat in a room with eight deputy chiefs and myself and the chief of police, and we had some detectives come in and describe what our police officers were up to in Rampart, and Rafael Perez and his fellow thugs on the LAPD. And they were thugs, they just happened to carry a bat. And when they described the activities those officers were up to, you could hear a pin drop in that room, because we as chief officers were stunned that this happened under our nose, and we were so ineffective at leadership of the LAPD that it happened. That's how personal we took it. So we did that investigation. And you know what? If you read the media accounts, you'd think the entire department was tainted. It was four people. Four people rigged all that havoc on all law enforcement across the country and painted us all as bad because they chose to be crooked cops. And why didn't it happen? It happened because management didn't do its job, and I was part of that management team. And when we really started slicing and dicing what was happening inside the department, sergeants weren't supervising, lieutenants weren't managing sergeants, captains were ignoring obvious things happening in the command in Rampart. Even a deputy chief one day, when I interviewed him, one of my peers, I asked him, "So, did you know anything was going on in Rampart for two and a half years? Didn't you suspect something was happening in craft?" "Yeah, but I didn't really know what." "Well, what did you do about it?" "Well, I didn't know what to do." Here's a guy making 150 grand a year, not a small chunk of change, with a 34-year career in the LAPD, and a deputy chief saying, "I didn't know what to do." So that's why we were in that mess, because people chose not to lead in the LAPD. So we went through all of that scandal, and by the time I retired, I just have to be honest with you, I was totally burned out. I was saddened by the things that I saw. I had to testify in the Rodney King case against four police officers, and I shared this with my fellow officers on the department yesterday and today. I am never in my career gonna let any supervisor, any employee, put me in the position of having to testify against my own again. That is awful. And for two and a half days, oh, excuse me, for two and a half days, I had to sit like this far and stand just like this, and all four of them were standing right here, they were defense attorneys, and I had to testify against them in a criminal case. No police chief should ever have to do that. And as long as I'm the chief of Collexico, I'm gonna do everything that I can to make sure that nobody stains the badge that we carry and dishonors all of us in law enforcement. So why are all my peers here, you're wondering, why are they here? I just called them up and said, "Hey, I need your support. I have a lot of work to do. People are making allegations about my department and my people. I want to know if it's true, and I need help." And I know it's not always true when people make allegations. That's why we have a bill of rights for peace officers, and we have to do an investigation. But I also knew with all the turmoil and swirl in the organization that I couldn't do it alone with just the people on the Collexico PD. I knew I needed the help. So the sheriff of Imperial County said, "Mike, you need help, you got it." The DA of Imperial County said, "Mike, you need it. I'll send you some people, you got help." The chief of police around the city said, "Mike, you need help, you got it." And they don't even know me yet. That's the kind of support we have in this valley for doing the right thing in the city of Collexico. So I want my officers to hear, "That's support for you. That's people that want to help you get the training you need, the equipment you need, the capability you need, and bring back the honor we deserve as an organization." And that's my commitment. So why am I here? Well, I'm gonna come back from retirement after seven years. Money's not the issue. I've got money. Made lots of money in private industry for the last year, working for a rail company and Nokia, selling big... I even sold missile systems, if you can imagine that, since I've left the LAPD, working for these big companies. But you know what? There's no passion there. There's no service. This is companies making money and crunching numbers, no matter how we do it. That's just what happens in industry. Did I love the money? Oh, yeah, I had three kids going to college. And every college sucked me for every dime of all that money that I made in private industry. It's all gone, but it was awesome. My kids got to go to school, so it was an awesome opportunity. Now my kids are out of school. This has been like a divine event, because all the ducks have kind of lined up. My last kid graduated, what? I forgot, honey, February. My last kid, February. And all of a sudden, I got paychecks coming in, and I don't have to write checks to any colleges, like all the stuff. I actually had money to spend, you know? So all of this has kind of happened. So here's Richard sharing this vision to me about what he wants to do in Collexico. And I felt the welling in my guts, just like, "Wow, I was built to do this, how can I say no?" And then I thought in the next breath, "Oh my God, I haven't talked to my wife about this." Richard remembers this conversation. I said, "Richard, I think I'm in, but, you know, I'm the head, but my wife always remind me she's the neck that turns the head." So I went over to talk to the neck, you know? So I sat my wife down, and I could just tell she's got this look of life. "Are you really gonna do this?" And I said, "Okay, here's why I want to do it." And I shared all these same things that I just shared with you. And I said, "Why would you want to do this?" And I said, "You know what? I want to go somewhere and be the chief of police and live completely in the light with everything that I do, everything my officers do, everything we go, everything that I say, everything that I do, every decision that I make, everything my officers do, every choice they make, will be done in the light. If the council wants to know what we're doing, if the community wants to know what we're doing, if the officers want to know what we're doing, if the media wants to know what we're doing, I want to be so transparent it's gonna scare you." So the truth that I told my officers yesterday, when we were talking about where are we going, and I told them this thing, and I could see their look on their face, like, "What the heck does he mean in the light? And what does he mean by the dark?" And I explained to them, you know, I was really fortunate to grow up with peers that have lost their value, and I'm fortunate to grow up in the church community and with my wife and a lot of people around me who share values and principles that all of us love and why we hire cops in the first place and hope they have. So living in the light, living in the dark is exactly this, what I said. Every decision I make, if it's the wrong decision, I'm gonna admit it, I'm gonna make a new one. And if anyone tries to hide anything in this organization as long as I'm here, it's not gonna happen, it's gonna be in the light. Everything's gonna be outside. If we make bad decisions inside the department, you're gonna find out about it, it's not gonna be a secret. And I'm even more committed to that, living in the light, after what I've seen in the last, what is it, 32 hours? I don't know, I've kind of lost track. It started Monday at 1:00, so however many hours that it's going to take, it's over two and a half days. I've had the opportunity to meet with a lot of my law enforcement brethren, I've met with a lot of the officers in the hallway, which are the best conversations in the world. I got to meet with the POA today, they got to share all their expressions, I've met with... Everywhere I go in the community, the other thing I found out is, in LA you can hide, there's 4 million people, nobody knew I was one of the chiefs of the LAPD. I could walk around and anonymity. There's no place I can go in Collexico without getting a fire. They saw my mugshot in the paper, and oh my gosh, it's like everywhere I go, people are talking to me. And people want to talk to me because they're so passionate about wanting something different in the city. I've never seen anything like it. They're very passionate for change in the city. The police officers are passionate for change in the cities. The CO, the POA is, your officers, your union is passionate for change in the cities. And you know what? That is actually simple to do when it's done in the light. And I'm up for that. Whatever we have to do to make this the best police department in the state of California, that's what I'm committed to do. And then there's a reality check. So here's a reality check. I said I'm gonna live in the light, and if I offend people, it is not in any way, shape, or form my purpose to offend anyone, but I'm going to live in the light and I'm gonna tell the truth about what I've seen in the last 30-some hours. So my department, the badge that I'm gonna carry, has a reputation for being a dishonest police department. You know what? Do I believe that yet? No, I've been here 32 hours, how could I possibly believe that? If I did that, I would be a disservice to the great police officers in the Collexico Police Department, and I wouldn't be honest with you, because I haven't done enough of my own investigation to know. But I have seen some things that give me great concern, but more importantly, I've heard some things that give me even deeper concern. And that's what I'm committed to deal with. So I want to just share a few snippets, so the city council doesn't pick on some fly-by-knight that's just gonna run in here and do something silly. I'm not. I'm committed to being methodical. I met with all my officers, and I met with the union. We're gonna implement the department manual. So what does that mean to those of you who aren't in police work? Every organization, no matter where they are in the world, has rules and regulations. And the Collexico Police Department, based upon what I've seen in the last 32 hours, those rules and regulations have not been routinely followed, including by leadership. So if leadership doesn't follow it, why would the troops? They don't. So there's the baseline of basic policing in a police department, and everyone ignored it in the chief of police. Why did they ignore it? Well, some because they had no choice, that was the direction they were given, and others just because they could, nobody cared. Okay? That's just reality. It happens in every police department. It happened in the LAPD. At least in Collexico, they have a, you know, like a normal manual. The LAPD one is like this, it's like, it would frighten you to see the size of the manual. So do some people do it out of ignorance? I don't think so. So what I'm talking about, in the light, we're born with a conscience, every single one of us. It's a gift we all have inside of us. And that conscience knows the moment you make a decision to do something whether you're living in the light or the dark. We're pretty good as humans at dulling that conscience when we're living in the dark and justifying to ourselves why we're making a dark choice. But the reality is, we know we're living in the light and we're living in the dark. So once we establish the baseline of the rules, then everybody knows how to play fair in the game. And then again, it's not a game. Police officers are the most highly trusted group of individuals in a government with all the power. They can take life, they can take liberty, and they can take property. And they can do it in an instant, in a moment. And then it's up to the rest of us to ferret it all out later and make sure that it was done with reasonable, probable cause and was the right thing to do. And will we make mistakes? Absolutely. I'm not worried about people that make mistakes, when it's just a mistake. But when they go out there and do it on purpose, they tarnish every single one of them, and that's why my peers are here today. They don't want tarnishing in their department, they don't want it in my department, they don't want it anywhere because it's always with a broad brush. They blame the entire Imperial Valley for what one or two people choose to do in an organization. That's why they're here supporting me. And they're also here supporting me to help my officer to get the training they need, the support they need, the leadership training they need, to get us back on track. And I gotta tell you, so the very first day, Richard and John and I, they wanted to introduce me to the officers over in the Collexico Police Department. We walked from City Hall over to the Collexico Police Department, and they started introducing me to the people on the Collexico Police Department. I'd never seen these people before, I didn't know anything about them. And you know, police officers aren't known to have emotion. I do have emotion, and I don't care if people don't like the fact that I get upset, because I live in my emotions, it's who I am, I'm not gonna hide it. I'm that passionate about what I do. And look, for the most part, in my career in the LAPD, it was all about, you know, I'm robo-cop, I have no emotions. All I do is get angry and mad when I need to, but you're never gonna see any other emotion out of me. So what did I see when I got to the Collexico Police Department? I walked in the door, I don't remember who I saw first, but I know there were civilians. And the sighs of relief on their faces and the words that they said to me would just break your heart. I met police officers, I met civilians, and you know what they feel like to me? They feel like post-traumatic stress syndrome victims. Honestly, that's what your police officers feel like. I have never seen anything like it. And they kept saying to me over and over, "Thank God, we're gonna get some leadership," is what they said, over and over and over again. Were they leery of me? You bet your boots they are. They're still waiting and measured, and they're gonna see if I'm really up to what I'm saying I'm gonna do, and I'm okay with that. I would be afraid of me based upon my experience in the LAPD if I was gonna be my new chief. I'd be terrified when I'm gonna get to know you, at least before I make up my mind, and they've all agreed to do that. And what I have to tell you, I've never, in all my years of placing, in all the tough situations where I went in and had to clean up the division, I've never seen people that felt like they'd been kidnapped and held hostage for so long that there was no way out. That's how they feel. So all this frustration you see coming out of the POA and everything, I'm not gonna speak for them, I'm just making it up, it's about the lack of some work perspective. And I'm gonna give them that, and I'm gonna demand that they give you the same in the community and to each other. I also experienced many, many officers and civilian employees talking about retaliation and threats, and threats of brutality in the police department amongst each other. And I'm here to say, "That's never gonna happen on my watch, or you're not gonna work the Collexico Police Department." You notice that sign up there? Do you think we write these things just for fun? We don't. People really work hard to put together what they believe in in the city, in a courteous and respectful manner. If we can't at least do that, how do you think they're gonna treat people in the community if they treat each other that way in the station? The very same way and probably a whole lot worse. And I'm not saying everybody, but people are making the allegation that that's the way they've been treated in their department. So the next thing I see is I walk into the station, and there's two lieutenants. They're my number-two people in the organization. Okay? I've had a cop a really long time, and all my friends here in front row, I've had the chance to talk to, they've been cops for a long time in the police work and DA's. My two lieutenants have been assigned to work patrol as police officers. The two people that are the number-two people of the organization have been reassigned to work patrol in a patrol car. And sergeants were running the Collexico Police Department. Okay? So I don't know what management book you can read, or where anybody can come and show me where that's okay. That was a level of disrespect that no human being should have suffered. So I think my two lieutenants are both here, one's over here, one's in the back, and I think most of you know who they are. And my executive secretary Martha, she's right here in the front row. So I walk into Martha's office, and she's sitting there with a shocked look on her face when I get introduced as her new chief, right? And she's like, the stunned look on her face, and then tears start streaming down her face. And of course, they did for me too. How could I not? You know, I'm still human, right? And she looks at me and she goes, "You're really our new chief?" Those were her words, she was like stunned. And the next words out of her mouth were, "Thank God." Okay? So I'm sorry for laying you out, Martha. You know what the story is, you know? So then, she explains to me what she's been doing. Absolutely nothing. So she's the chief administrative assistant for the chief of police in the Collexico Police Department, and she was assigned to sit in the corner and do nothing. And you say, "Well, why would that happen?" I don't know, I can't explain that one to you. A valued employee that's been for an awfully long time, and the way an executive assistant works is this. An executive assistant is responsible for knowing where I am, what I'm doing, helping me get there on time, keeping me on track, identifying the issues that I need to deal with in the organization. It's literally like my wife at work. That might keep me on track. So why would you not want your lieutenants being lieutenants and your executive secretary being your executive secretary? I'll let you decide on your own why that was happening. You're bright people. I don't know yet, but I'm gonna get to the bottom of it. I'm supposed to be using the microphone, I'm sorry. So again, I'm talking to community members, and the community members are talking about my police officers and making accusations that make my blood furrow, because, you know what? I know they're only accusations, but I also know the emotions behind those accusations have been carried around for a very long time by a lot of people. So I promised them I would investigate them. I met with the POA, and I know how they feel, like, "So we're gonna have this onslaught of investigations?" Hey, it's the unfortunate reality of the new guy of the division or the department that's gonna do the right thing, but still, I'm not making up my mind based upon that, but this is what I've seen and hearing. Every citizen that came to me had some complaint about what was happening in the Collexico Police Department. And that, I'm telling you, that's a shocker. You might expect a few, but they literally, after they saw my mugshot and saw me, man, they're like making a beeline for me to tell me some of the things that have happened to them in the community. Now, do I believe all of them are true? I mean, let's be honest, some are true, some aren't. Some are suspects trying to get out of whatever they did, I get all that, I've been a cop a long time, but when everybody does, I'm really concerned about it. So we're gonna investigate all that. We're gonna do the light engine, and we're gonna do it with your wife. And we're gonna be very fair to the officers and to the community, because that's my job. That's what we're gonna do. And I have the support. The sheriff was fantastic, but I met with him yesterday, he said, "Mike, you want some of my people assigned to you? You got it. We'll come over and help you." So why is that important? Well, that's important because if I get an onslaught of stuff and all my officers who do it is investigating stuff, I'm not gonna get anything done. So thank you, sheriff. You thanked the sheriff for me, and I know that you will tell him, and just thank you for being here and making that offer. I may have to take you up on it based upon stuff I keep getting, but you know, it remains to be seen, but thank you for that opportunity. And the other chief said the same thing. "You want me to loan you some people? You got it." So in this Imperial Valley, I'm stunned. In LA County, that would never happen. We're all too busy to be competitive or say we're better than the other department, you know? So that's really an awesome experience. So then I run into some firefighters. And the firefighters say, "Do you know that we can't come into your police station?" And I said, "What?" "Yeah, we're not allowed to come into the Collexico Police Station. We have to get permission from the chief of police." I said, "Are you kidding me? You guys are city employees, you're firefighters, when I get in trouble, you're the one I'm calling. You're gonna rescue me when I'm down and I'm hurt. But more importantly, they're city employees, and that's a city property. So why would you not allow access to other city employees in the police station?" I'll let you make up your own mind about it. So then the next thing I see, I meet with the media. The media in this town is unbelievable. They already know everything anyway before the interview. But they're unbelievably supportive of the city in trying to get the word out of what's happening and everything else. And I said to them, "Here's what I'd like to do to every station, they're all here, you notice?" And I said to them, "Hey, I want to live in the light, and you have to help me do that. And I'm gonna meet with them anytime they want to meet, and we're gonna talk about what the union and I are doing, what the department and I are doing, what the community and I are doing, what the council and I are doing, what the city manager and I are doing, everything in the light." So there's no more secrets. When you hear rumors, you're gonna actually know what's happening, and I will hide nothing. And if I hide something, I hope the city manager fires me. I honestly, I'm just standing here saying that you're all witnesses. There's no room for hiding what's happening in public safety that they'll sink and trust anywhere in the world. We have a responsibility to be responsive and honest to what's happening in our society. So then, so then as I'm telling my court lieutenants, and I don't think they slept today, and I know Martha hasn't, but they're so energized, they're worrying me out, they won't let me go home, they want to know more, they want to know more. And I keep dumping these things on them, and they keep bringing me reports and bringing me investigations, and I'm reading all this stuff. And I'm gonna talk to you about some patterns of things I saw, and again, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but it's patterns that I'm gonna have to take a look at and investigate. And I'm literally not trying to beat up my police department, but the only way that I'm gonna have credibility in the eyes of the public and this council is if I do my own independent investigation of all of this stuff, and sometime later after I've actually done an investigation, not listened to rumor and innuendo, and actually looked through all the facts, and come back here and say, "Here's what's actually going on," then I'm not doing my job. So I'm gonna do my job. So the first three, two and a half days, here's what I see. So, one of the first things I see is, um, I'm trying to think of how I would describe it. When I look through overtime and some of the investigations that happened in overtime, the first thing that strikes me is, the police department had a budget of $400,000 of overtime. The police department spent 1.4 million. Okay? And I'm like, "Are you kidding me?" You can ask the two lieutenants, my response was, "Are you kidding me? How did that happen? How did we spend $1 million over our budget?" So I've heard all the stories about how we spent 1.4 million over our budget, I've heard that the blade was put on the finance person, I've heard all of that stuff. You know what? The buck stops with me. If I had to go to my city manager and said, "I spent $1 million more in overtime than I had," he either had to fire me because I was incompetent and wasn't paying attention, or he'd have to fire me because I intentionally spent city money I wasn't entitled to spend. I have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of the city to live within my budget. And if I can't, I come to this body with the city manager and I ask for the money I need. If I don't get it, I don't spend it. It's not legal for me to do that. So that's just like, right out of the shoes, like, "Are you kidding me?" You know, that's the first one. Then I'm hearing all these stories about how police officers and people worth overtime and don't get supervisory approval for it, they just work overtime, turn it in, they get paid. Anybody see the mischief in that one? And then you look at the 1.4 million dollar budget level and you go, "Oh, okay, there's a pattern here, right? So nobody's managing it? So the officers, you know, they're gonna work all the overtime they can? I would. Are you kidding me? That's money in the bank for me, at your expense, as the citizens are sitting in here paying taxes, at your expense." So that's over today. We're gonna manage overtime. And, so then, the next thing I see is asset forfeiture funds. So those of you who don't know what those are, in the world of narcotics, when we're working in public safety from time to time, we, in the law enforcement community, through the DA's office, and everything's legal above board, we, we take the bad guy's assets, and we sell it, and we use it to buy equipment and stuff to make the police department run. It's an awesome opportunity, but it's a very ripe form of use, because the chief of police, on his own, gets to decide what he does with that money. So what's the mischief here? So today, literally like, a couple hours ago, I'm walking through the parking lot of the Calixco Police Department, and I see this $60,000 Suburban Tavo, fancy wheels, leather interior, and you'll see it's black tinted all the way around, you know, like it's a mafia car, you know? It's probably blacked out all the way around. So I said to my two lieutenants, I said, "Wow, somebody here's got a really nice car. Somebody's worked a lot of overtime." They go, "No, that's the city, that's our car, that's a police department car." I said, "Are you kidding me?" And they said, "No." Well, who drives that? And they told me who drives that. And I said, "So wait a minute, so we spent 60 grand on one car for one person when I could've bought three brand new police cars for the same price for my police officers in the field? That does not pass the smell test anywhere I've ever been." So my pledge is, and I'm sorry, city manager, you're gonna hear this for the first time, I'm gonna go talk to the dealer we got this Tavo from, and I'm gonna see if I can trade it in and give us the police cars we need so everybody gets upset. So then I start looking at discipline cases, and this is the really tough one, and my poor guys in the POA, they're, they're trying to give me some help and some lead time and everything to do it, but this is scary for police officers. When a chief comes in and says, "I'm looking at all the complaints, I'm looking at patterns," that scares the you-know-what out of them, especially a guy with my track record in the LAPD. So they're like, "What are you gonna do, come in and be the hatchet guy and fire everybody?" No, I'm looking at all the old cases. I'm looking at all the current cases, I'm developing some new ones based upon what I'm seeing. That is a treacherous, not treacherous, that's a very nervous time for police officers because they don't know what I'm gonna do yet. But I'm making the pledge in front of you, I'm gonna do the right thing. And if they didn't do anything wrong, they got nothing to worry about. If they made a mistake, I've made plenty of them, in 34 years, I've made my fair share of mistakes. I don't think I did very many where I actually went out and decided to go do something I shouldn't do, but I've made some mistakes in my career. I got disciplined for them when I was on the LAPD. I never forgot it. Let me tell you something, chief, there's your official reprimand, you know, that, that's not something you ever forget. You get about 100 commendations and you always remember the one reprimand you got. But then, I also am smart enough to know that there probably are one or two of those situations that were on purpose. And I have no sympathy for the people who choose to violate the law, violate the policy and do it on purpose. So they will be held accountable. So the last thing I wanted to say, and really I want to, I want to, after I say this last thing, I want to harp on some very positive words, because I don't want you to get the wrong idea about me. I am so excited about being the chief of Calixco. I'm so glad for my friend, the sheriff sitting here, don't take offense to this, I'm so glad that they have a blue uniform and a round badge, it just feels like home. I'm not looking to do 120 degree weather in a blue uniform, but I'm gonna wear it proudly when that day comes. And as one of the city council member mentioned, I haven't finished my background yet. So legally, I cannot wear a uniform and carry a gun. Although I can carry a gun because I have a concealed weapon permit from the LAPD, as a retired officer, so I do carry a gun, I'm not foolish. I do have this target on me that says, "Chief of Police Department." So I do carry a gun, but I'm not gonna tarnish the badge, I'm gonna wait till I finish all the post-re requirements. You get a kick out of this, 34 years in the LAPD, and I have to go all the way back to my junior high days and fill out those background forms and tell them about who my teachers were and everything else, even though they're all dead. I have to fill out 28 pages of background forms for, for post, and I may have to go back and get retrained in basic police training. I'm up for that. Because these guys, and these guys, all the members in the Calixco Police Department, deserve to have a leader that cares about them, and I do. And I'm committed to make this the finest police department in Southern California, and it's not gonna take long with all the help I have from all these people here, those people there, my fire department friends, it's not gonna take you long. These guys are proud to wear the badge of Calixco. And I'm looking forward to being their chief, and I know they're gonna support me, after they get through being skeptical for a while, I'll win them over, and they'll get that I'm actually on their side, but I'm still their boss. But mostly I'm on your side, because you, as the community, are the ones that hired me. You're the ones that pay my paycheck, and I'm not chief. Chief officers are not chief anywhere. And I'm gonna earn every dime and nickel of that, and I'm gonna be here in the city of Calixco, not living in Calixco, I'll just be right up front about that. I actually found a place in a senior citizen trailer park. So I got to see this video for my family and friends, "Hey, this is my new double-wide motorhome, free-hander. Watch it go, keep going." I got it all. I get to play golf, I got a lake I can go fishing, right there in my little community. And I got a whole bunch of retired cops to keep an eye on things for me when I'm not around. I actually live in this place, my lovely wife found that place for me. I found this little, you know, dank, little apartment building, I don't need anything, I just need a room, and she's like, "Oh no, you're not living there." So, the chief alone just walked up to me today and said, "Mike, you need a place to live, my wife wants you to come live with us." I mean, this is the kind of outpouring that I've gotten from this community. I'm excited to be here. I hope you, as council members, can see your way to support me on what we're about to do, because you have a great police department, a great community, and all they need is some leadership. And I've never been more committed to anything in my life, I feel like I'm 25 again. I wanted to be an LA cop after watching Jack Webb and Adam 12 from the time I was three years old. And man, I've always had that steely Robocop look. I don't have to have that anymore, I can just be Mike. I can have some fun. And that's what it feels like, it feels like I'm 25 again and I just get to be me, I get to be transparent, I get to make mistakes, I get to look foolish, I get to laugh at myself, but most of all, I get to serve this city, serve this council, and be a leader for this city manager. And I really want to applaud this city manager. I've worked for a lot of city managers, CEOs, police commissions, and this man shares my vision for what I want to happen in Calixco, and I've never experienced that before, and he's the number one reason that I'm here in the city of Calixco. And I hope you don't forget that. This is the man who brought me here, and I'm really looking forward to working with him and making a difference, the kind that you guys, as council members, want to make for this city. You guys are not serving for a lot of money, right? No money at all?